All right, we're at nine o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. We have Kathy out today. And for those who are here in the audience, if you would like to get an agenda, you can find them on the back bookshelf so you can follow along with all the items that we're gonna go through today. Approval of March twenty-five, twenty nineteen minutes. Are there any edits or corrections? If not, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just have a question on item number thirteen. When we had the ordinance amendment, it says that we moved to have the, basically, continue the ordinance amendment review to the April twenty-second and the May thirteenth meeting. And my question is, is it, was it and or? In short, if we get through on the twenty-second, do we still have to hear it on May thirteenth? If so, that wasn't, I'd like to, if we get done on the twenty-second, we should just be done on the twenty-second and not have to go to the thirteenth as well.
Do y'all remember that conversation when we had that?
Oh, yes.
I thought, I know we were trying to get done with the chapters, but I thought we scheduled the two so that we had one final meeting to kind of just review all the edits and see if we wanted to make any final changes. That's what I kind of remembered, but I could be totally wrong.
Well, if we have the word and in there, does that mean that we have to hear it on the thirteenth as well? In that case, that wasn't my intention. It was, we, I think we set forth the next few meetings in case they're needed, but if they're not needed, we get done on the twenty-second. We should be done.
There'll be a minimum of two. One, the next time later this month to finish off your review of the draft document. And then about a two-meeting waiting period for the document to be updated by Matrix in its entirety.
Okay.
And then come back to the board for a fresh look with all your corrections. And then recommendation, hopefully, at that meeting to the board for their first hearing.
Right. May thirteenth, we would move forward with the document.
As revised.
As revised to the board.
Right. What the Planning Commission still has not done is to look at the proposed future land use maps. That was back in chapter three, I think it was, with the zoning districts, but I know Commissioner Johnson had some concern about that one, so that'll probably come up at the next meeting. And that's where we had talked about that, sorry, it's probably off-topic, but they're putting together a GIS layers, I guess, so the public can view what the future land uses are gonna be.
Okay.
And then that was gonna take GIS in the city about three, four weeks to do it. Matrix is almost finished with one that they're gonna pull in the View to Twenty Forty website. So it's viewable sooner. Sorry.
Okay. Is that a to your question?
It does answer my question. I have no further questions.
Okay. Any further corrections, corrections or edits? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Approval of today's agenda? I'd entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
I so approve.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Consent agenda, PJ.
Good morning, Commissioners. PJ Conover, Director of Planning Department. Commissioner Roskodak, welcome to your first Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. All right, consent agenda. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the Planning Commissioner recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decisions. Item three, conditional use permit review fourteen oh three for Lonnie Ryman to review a storage unit located on a subject property in the Highway Service District. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit fourteen oh three with ten conditions. Item four, conditional use permit review sixteen oh one for Daniel Elliott to review living in an existing cabin while building a new single-family residence on the subject property and to also allow for the existing cabin to remain on the property to be used as a guest house once the single-family residence is completed, and this is all located in the general agriculture district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit sixteen oh one. Item five, conditional use permit review seventeen oh nine for Wesley and Carrie Mentally to review a vacation home rental on the subject property in the low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit seventeen oh nine with fifteen conditions. Item six, conditional use permit review eighteen oh two for Glenda Robertson to review a vacation home rental on the subject property in the low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit eighteen oh two with fourteen conditions. Item seven, conditional use permit review eighteen oh three for Lisa Tush, Tracy, and Lonnie Tush as the agents to review a shop building to be used as temporary living quarters while building a single-family residence on the subject property in the limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit eighteen oh three with eight conditions. Number eight, conditional use permit nineteen oh three for Joseph and Terry Krieger to allow a storage shed slash garage as a primary structure on the subject property in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit nineteen oh three with eleven conditions. Item nine, construction permit review seventeen oh five for Anthony and Michelle Griffith to review bringing infill to an area to level gravel and to allow for reclamation of the remaining area. Staff recommends to continue the review of construction permit seventeen oh five to the July eighth, two thousand nineteen Planning Commission meeting to verify that final stabilization has taken place. Item ten, construction permit review eighteen oh four for Stromer Properties LLC. Brooke Stromer is the agent to review the construction of a parking area on the subject property. Staff recommends to continue the review of construction permit eighteen oh four to the April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen Planning Commission meeting to allow staff time to contact the applicant. Item eleven, construction permit review eighteen oh five for Under Canvas Incorporated, UC Glamping Partners LLC. Jeremy Budge is the agent to review gravelling the roadways, cart paths, and parking areas on the subject property. Staff recommends to end construction permit eighteen oh five. Item twelve, construction permit review eighteen twelve for Brad Nibel to review the excavation and levelling of the hillside for future residents in accordance with sections two oh eight and five oh seven of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Staff recommends to continue the review of construction permit eighteen twelve to the April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen Planning Commission meeting with sixteen conditions. Item thirteen, construction permit review nineteen oh one for site work specialists to review the installation of public and private utilities to include water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, common utility trench, power, communications, and gas, and also include the installation of concrete curb, gutter, and sidewalk to also include an asphalt pavement. Staff recommends approval of the extension of construction permit nineteen oh one with thirteen conditions.
Are there any items that staff would like pulled?
No, sir.
Any items from the membership that you'd like pulled off of the consent agenda? Any members of the audience like items pulled from the consent agenda? Come on up, sir. State your name and what item.
My name is Brad Nibel. I'd like item twelve pulled from the consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Any other members of the audience like to have any consent items pulled from the consent agenda? If not, these items are all gonna be voted on in one vote. So if you would like to speak on behalf, you need to have a poll to be heard separately. Seeing none, that leaves our current consent agenda as items three through eleven. And item thirteen, do I have a motion to approve those consent items?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number twelve. Sir, if you'd like to come forward.
Again, my name is Brad Nibel. I have a lot on School Drive that I got a notice of a violation this week on. And here they're extending it to April twenty-sixth here, but the violation said that there were some things that had to be done by the fifteenth.
Okay.
The violations were for sediment in the road ditch. I was required to put in a silt fence here a couple months ago when the ground was frozen. And I think that is the problem is that when I dug that silt fence in the road ditch, it put dirt in the road ditch. Now, as far as sediment in the road ditch, there's no sediment draining into the road ditch. So I would like to have somebody come out there and specifically tell me what they want done with this road ditch so that, I mean, onsite, so that I know what's. I contacted Mark from the Highway Department. He drove by there this morning. He didn't see any problems with the road ditch itself. He thought it looked fine. If there was any sediment in there, he said you've gotten it cleaned up. But he said there was some changes he thought they might want to the silt fence. Because when I dug that in there, the ground was frozen and you don't dig a very good, I mean, dig the trench with a ripper tooth, but with all the rock and stuff that's in the ground there, it doesn't make a very nice trench usually when you're trying to dig in that kind of conditions. I had to use a jackhammer to put the posts in with a drill on it to get those silt fence posts in the ground. So if there are changes that need to be made to that silt fence, I want somebody to come onsite and specifically tell me what they want done with that fence.
Does staff wanna come up here and address any of these specific issues? I remember last meeting, whenever you came up, when we reconsidered your item, whenever you asked at the last meeting, there was some very specifics that were stated to you about the property specifically on that silt fence.
I did. I put some wattles in and stuff like that since that last meeting.
Did you kind of fix that silt fence up? Because you were saying it was coming around it or something of that nature.
Yeah.
If I don't remember exactly, but I remember like around an edge, there was material coming around the edge and they were, and the staff was telling you.
Well, they were afraid that there was going to be material gonna come around the edge of the silt fence, but the silt fence is pretty much in a V shape. It's gotta run down. It's lower in one spot, so the water's gotta run down towards center of the silt fence. I mean, if it comes around the edge of that silt fence, the water's gonna be two, three feet deep to go around the edge.
Okay. So you just want somebody from.
I did talk to Mark this morning from the Highway Department, and he said there probably, there may be some issues with that silt fence that they want changed. Might be what the problem is. So, because there is dirt on the downhill side of the silt fence. But I dug, like I said, I dug that through there in the frozen ground in the middle of the winter and had to use a jackhammer to get it in. So if it's not the way it needs to be, I want somebody to give me the specific things that need to be done. He suggested that on the driveway portion, I should have something more on there, some more gravel. I said I'd put some more gravel on there so that that didn't run. But I'm gonna have this whole property covered with straw or silt fence or something here, and then I'm gonna start digging, and I'm gonna dig all that back up again.
Any questions for Mr. Nibel?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jim.
Is there somebody, would it be somebody from the Planning Commission?
Yeah.
The Planning Department?
The violation order, so I want somebody to come out to the site and specifically tell me what they want changed.
Okay, PJ, is that something you would do or?
PJ Conover, Director of Planning Department. We can go out and inspect the property. We have several times. It'd be the Environmental Division of the Department with Brittany and Cody. We fall short of wanting to tell people how to do their jobs, because then it puts the county liable.
Yeah, because if they tell you, you have to do it here, and then something else happens, and then you can say, well, you told me to put it here. You're supposed to mitigate.
The sediment in the road ditch, it says in there that if sediment gets in the road ditch, that I have to go out and clean it out.
Correct.
So I don't think there's gonna be a problem with sediment getting in the road ditch. But this violation order for me, that's already there, and I've, I'm not, I'm not seeing what they're, the sediment that they're saying is in the road ditch now, I don't, I don't see it. I mean, it's planted, you can see the grass coming up from before, from last summer. I've put some more grass seed on there. And so I've had Mark out there to look at it this morning, and he said that he thought the road ditch looked good, but he thought there might be some things that they wanted changed on the silt fence.
PJ, does someone wanna comment on the actual road ditch? What it looks like? I see some pictures here. It looks like there's sediment in there. So I just wanna, what's he seeing versus what we're seeing versus what's out there now?
Sure. Brittany Molitor, Environmental Planning Supervisor. There's more than just sediment in the road ditch with this property. We've asked for engineered plans for that site to be stabilized since November, and we have not received any engineered plans or anything about getting the site stabilized since November. That's part of the violation also. In addition, there's a couple of other conditions of approval of the construction permit that haven't been met in addition. So it's just not the sediment in the road ditch. There's more. In the notice of violation, it's clearly, I think you guys have it in your packet at the end.
Oh, yeah, there's multiple items on there, so.
What are the other items that need to be met besides the engineers I talked to this morning? Davies Engineering is working on, and he has Mike Schoen doing the retaining walls that need to be put in there. They're gonna talk today to see who has to send what to the county. And I gave him Cody's name, and they're gonna call him and talk to him after they've talked. But, I mean, as far as speeding up the engineer, there's not a whole lot that I can do about that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I've talked to Brad a few occasions, and I told Brad that I've got quite a few issues that I'm handling in District One, and I suggested that he get, go to his commissioner, which I believe would be Mark DeSantle.
Yep. Did call him, but all I got was a voice.
For transparency and clarification, if you and Mark and PJ's office went out there and the engineer do a physical site inspection together and then go back to PJ's office, and let's just try to get this worked out and resolved once and for all. And let their office, I think if everybody does a site inspection and are all on the same page, we can find the direction that we need, at least the first step that we should be taking.
Okay. Well, I've, like I say, getting Ron down there, the engineer down there, might be a little difficult, but getting everybody on the same page. But Deb Hadcock, when I called her, she suggested having somebody come out there and give me the specific issues with the site right now with the sediment in the road ditch.
Well, excuse me, when you say have someone come out there, did you mean somebody from the Planning Department?
Yep. And tell me specifically what's the sediment in the road ditch. Specifically show me where this is that they want cleaned out of there. Because I took pictures of it and I sent it in, and I've, I'm not seeing this where it's, I mean, all of this stuff was taken out of there when the ground was frozen, so.
Cody, you're gonna show them the two different pictures?
Cody, Environmental Planner. We've gone over with him several times of specifics that he needs to do. At the last meeting, I told him that he needed to stabilize the site and put straw up top. He told me that wouldn't be a problem, and then when I talked to him last week, he said that he didn't want to do that because he didn't know if he'd be digging anytime soon. But in the stormwater manual, it says that any site that lays dormant for more than twenty-one days needs to be stabilized. It's been five months.
Yeah, it's been several months.
And I've, I told him that, so the issues with the silt fence is it's not pulled tight. As you can see in that picture on the right, how it's bending in there, it shouldn't do that. It should be pulled, pulled tight. And I brought that up to him, and he told me that he fixed that. But this picture was taken last Tuesday or Wednesday. I think April, April first was when it was taken. So we've, we've discussed with him multiple times what needs to be done on the, on the site. And with, with the wattles in there, he was worried about, we, and one of the conditions was the cut and fill slopes. I told him that minus the cut and fill slopes, that he could throw some wattles and throw some wattles to try to slow the water coming off there. But I told him that he needed to, to be effective with it, it needs to extend across the entire part of the disturbed area. And as you can see in the picture on the left, it, it does not.
There's nothing holding all that dirt back?
No, I mean, all it's gonna do, it's gonna hit that part where it's blocking, obviously, but, I mean, on the sides, it's still gonna run down, and the silt fence is, is there, but it's still, it's not pulled tight, and it's not packed in the back properly either. And then the, his straw mats in the, in the front are torn up. So, I mean, we've, we've gone over with him multiple times. I talked to him twice last, last meeting about things that need to be, need to be done.
This situation with the silt fence, I've, the straw mats being torn up and the silt fence not being tight the way you want it, that's what I say. I was out there digging that trench in when that ground was frozen solid, putting it in with a jackhammer. That's, and that ground is completely full of rocks. That's not gonna be perfect, that silt fence. Or is tightening it up, I mean.
These erosion.
I will hold on. Oops, sorry. No, go ahead.
The erosion control measures that, like the silt fence like that, should have been put in before construction even started.
I was about to touch base on that. This, your construction started how, how long ago, Mr. Nibel?
In November.
Well, no, you, this was dug out when? That whole site, property site was dug out when?
I'm gonna say probably it was in October that I started digging it out.
So then you should have at least had it put up during that time before everything froze up, right?
Well, see, that's, this is something that I've never done on any other site. I've never had to put up, when I built the house right next door, I never had to put up any silt fence or wattles or anything.
Did you get a construction permit for all that? And there, and there was nothing in that construction permit?
Nothing at all. I never did any erosion control whatsoever.
To do erosion control?
No. I've never had to do this before on any construction site that I've done myself.
Hold on just a second. Brittany, do you have confirmation of that? Was there a construction permit for the other site?
No, not that I'm aware of. That other site, I believe that he had pulled a building permit for a single-family residence, and then it was actually a multifamily residence and came back and got a conditional use permit after the fact. But we did, but there's no record of a construction permit on that site.
Okay.
Well, they were out there inspected it several times. I mean, it's, it's been inspected. Brittany's been out there to the property while I was doing it, so.
Right, and many times we've told you what the issues were, though. I mean, we've, I, I know you've been up here before, those of us that have been on the commission a few times, or at least your, your property has. I don't know how many times you've actually been here, because I think sometimes we've discussed it when you weren't here. But your property's been before us for the last couple of months easily, and there's been a lot of issues with that property, correct? Because originally, you came in because you were mandated to have a, a construction permit because you moved all that dirt, and you didn't feel like you needed to have a construction permit for that. But you removed a significant amount of material in that area.
And I contacted all of the commissioners and the people from the Planning and Zoning Office, and I apologized to all of them for doing that, that it was my mistake, that I should have gotten that. I got the permit and I paid the fine. But just right here, this, I've never had to do this stuff before. And I've only found out now from the state that there is a company in town here that will come out and do this for me.
Okay, are you gonna consult with them and have them come do it?
I had the state come out and look at it, and I'm gonna have to get the state guy to come back out here again and, and show me what I'm doing wrong here. Because I, I can cover the whole site with straw if that's what's necessary to be done. I'll go get some square straw bales and just cover the whole thing with straw if that's what needs to be done. But I, I just, I keep doing more and more and more and more, and it's never enough. I'm never, I never get to a point where this is stabilized. And like I say, I've never had to do it before, so I don't know what I'm supposed to do.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
When can you meet with your engineer and get out there? Because the, your engineer, the civil engineer that you're working with likely knows exactly what should be done here and probably has a certification that, that, you know, proves that he has the education and the training and that kind of stuff that, that will address these issues. When, when will you be able to meet with them, and when will they be able to be onsite?
I called him this morning, but as far as when he could be onsite, I don't know. I'd have to call him and ask him. They're, they're really busy right now. That's why I haven't gotten the stuff back on the.
Is there anyone else that you can call, or is it just the one engineer?
Well, Ron Davis is the guy that is my engineer that's taking care of it. He's got another guy that works with him that's taking care of the retaining walls, trying to figure out what kind of retaining walls to put in the back there.
Well, and that probably will address issue number two, the cut and fill slopes that have been cut out of the banks and the, and the concerns about the stabilization of those banks. I, I guess I, you might need to call him again and, and have him come out sooner than later, I think. Because, you know, as, as it is now, you have the notice of violation, and if they can't get out there and help you in time to, to get this stuff resolved, I suggest maybe you try someone different if they can't get out there in that, in that amount of time. They should be able to review the site and understand what should be installed to make, make sure that it's stabilized in accordance with the stormwater manual.
If I, if I go out here and cover all this with straw or gravel that's exposed, will that make everybody happy for the stabilization?
Have you read?
Just get some straw bales and cover the whole thing with straw.
Have you read the requirements in, in the drainage and the stormwater criteria manual?
I haven't, no.
Okay. We, we might need to make that step one in this process, so you understand the, the requirements when someone disturbs a site like this and the approach that goes along with trying to stabilize the site. It bases it on, you know, different storms and uncertain amounts of rainfall, and those types of things all come into consideration with the level required at, at various stages in the, in the site development. So I, I would recommend, I guess, that that, that be done as a step one, and that might provide some background for you to understand what, what needs to be done. But I, I understand where the, the staff is coming from, where they don't wanna necessarily dictate that, you know, you have to do it exactly this way. Because there's certain ways that you can do, stabilize sites without having to, there's advantages of doing one thing versus the other, and I think that your engineer will probably help you through that process.
Well, I, I guess I could call him and see if he can come down there or when he can come down there. But what I wanna get is a specific answer after what I gotta do to stabilize this whole site.
I would talk to that individual, your engineer. That's the individual who's gonna give you the most accurate and the best information to stabilize your site. We're not gonna be able to do that for you.
Okay, well, I don't quite understand why you can send me a violation order, but you can't tell me what I gotta do to eliminate the violation order. I gotta go find somebody else to find out how to get rid of the violation order. I don't understand that.
Well, because we can tell you what you're violating or how you're violating it, but we're not gonna tell you what you have to build to do it, because there's multiple different, different ways that you can mitigate the erosion and things of that nature. So that's not up to us to tell you that way. That's for you as the property owner to, to consult an engineer to do that, to get them to draw plans or talk to you on how you can do it.
Well, see, now, all the training videos that I'm watching on TV are on the internet about this, site water preparation or wastewater. Every one of them, if you ever have any questions, come and ask us, we'll tell you. That's what every one of the trainers says in the videos. But there's nobody you can ask the questions to that'll tell you. And Cody's talking about the straw that I decided not to put on there. I put those two wattles up there, and I have a full roll of straw mat at my house that I was gonna roll out there, and I told him I decided not to do that. I wanted to see what the wattles did, if they worked, before I rolled out another roll of straw mat there. But if straws, I'll cover the whole site with straw if that's the problem.
But that may not fix your problem. You can, you could spend all that money on straw, and it may not still fix the problem. That's why you need to have someone who knows how to mitigate this come and take a look and then give you the best options.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Within the stormwater criteria manual, there's recommended processes. There's standard dimensions for different best management practice applications, et cetera, et cetera, that go through how to do some of these things and the offsets and the requirements accordingly. So I, I really encourage you to review that, but let's, let's go through the, your notice of violation. And we'll just go through these things one at a time. Is that, is that okay with the board? I wanna make sure that things are clear here.
I'm good.
Item number two is the cut and fill slopes be designed and constructed to minimize erosion in design plans. That, that falls within your engineer or whoever you're going to hire that will provide these plans. So we, we just need to know exactly when those things are coming. So that's, that's item number two. Item number seven has to deal with the sediment in, in, from the site is contained in such a manner that sediment does not reach the, the right-of-way ditch. It sounds like there's a discrepancy versus the, the pictures that we're seeing and, and your claim that there's no sediment from the site that's making it to the ditch. So that one would have to be reviewed. Did a building permit be obtained for any structure exceeding one hundred and forty-four square feet? So has that, am I understanding right that he needs to come in and get a building permit at this point?
Commissioner Marshall, not at this point, or not to that point yet. He did start digging a basement for a residence, but that's a general statement as a reminder for landowners, agents, and contractors of what the building permit requirement is, the minimum.
Okay. And then item number ten is that the disturbed area be revegetated as required in five oh seven A, five C. So that, that has to do with the restabilization of the, of the ground within a certain amount of time if construction activity, once construction activities cease. So the, again, there's, the requirements that go along with these things are pretty well detailed out in, in that manual. What's your plan for restarting construction on the site?
Well, I, I still haven't gotten a, a release from the stop work order to do any more digging on the site. So I've been working on this stabilization since the beginning, since November. So I, I'm gonna have to try and call somebody and find somebody who can come out to the site and tell me exactly what I have to do for stabilization. And because I just keep doing more and more and more, and it's never good enough.
I, I think that if you had someone come out and you, you came to the county with a plan, even if it was a sketch of your property, that followed the criteria in that manual, and you could show that it followed the criteria in that manual, then, then you will have met the requirements.
Okay, well, I'm gonna.
I hope that, I hope that I'm helping you here.
I'll contact the Department of Environment and Pier and see if I can get somebody to come out from there. And I'm gonna try to contact FMG Engineering. Apparently, they're certified. And see if they can come out and look at it right now and see what else I need to do. And as far as the, the stuff that I need for my. And as far as the stuff that I need from my engineer, you know, when he gets it to me, I'll get it to you, but I can't speed him up, really. I mean, they got a lot of work that they're doing, too, so. And I haven't done anything else on the property since they told me to stop, so. Really, I guess, getting it stabilized is what I've been working on ever since.
And I think that the board and the county and the staff, everyone, just wants that done. And once that's done and complete, then things can move on.
Okay, well, I've gone out and taken pictures on other job sites to see what everybody else is doing, and nobody else is doing any of the stuff that I'm doing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Maybe their erosion is different, but.
PJ, can I have you come up a minute? Let's say that Brad does what he's supposed to do, which I'm not quite sure what that is yet. And then your office will go out there and give it a blessing that it's done, and he can move on.
Oh, that's part of it. We also need to lift the stop work order, is that what you mean?
Right.
We also need the engineered plans.
So basically, you're waiting for an engineered plan?
Engineered plans plus the stabilization of the property to lift the stop work order, is correct.
Okay, I'm just trying to.
Right.
I kinda came in this, to this a little bit late, but I'm just trying to figure out, does he have a copy of this manual that tells him the specifications?
It is available online. One of the meetings at our front counter, we informed him of the training videos, which he had said he's looked at. Also, that to look at the manual and also the state sediment and erosion control training, that it would be a good idea to sign up, which all of the staff takes, which actually is held next week.
And during that process, if he's got questions, he can contact your office so that, try to navigate through the process.
Yeah, and he has.
Okay.
Any further questions for staff or for Mr. Nibel? All right, do you have anything further for us, Mr. Nibel?
No, I'll try to contact somebody and see what I can do to get this stabilized, so that I'll do whatever they want me to do to get it stabilized, but I think the concern about liability of not being able to tell me exactly what to do is an issue. I think that that needs to be, and this class that he talked about the other day, I want information about when that is and where it is, so I can go take it.
Okay, I'm sure if you talk with PJ after the meeting today, he will make sure you have that information.
Okay.
And I wouldn't hesitate to keep trying to get ahold of your commissioner for your district, Brad, and he's technically the one that should be the liaison between you and the county departments.
Okay, I'll do that. Thanks.
Thank you. PJ, I'll talk to you afterwards. I'd like to get that information, too, as well. I might come through there. Any other members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none, current recommendation is to continue the review of construction permit CP 1812 to the April 22nd, 2019 Planning Commission meeting with the following 16 conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, no. Motion carries. Takes us to item number 14.
Good morning. Jason Thunison, Planning and Zoning. Agenda item number 14 is conditional use permit review CU 1428 to transfer vacation home rental in a general agriculture district. Applicant is Brady L. Groves, BLG Investments LLC. Staff recommends approval of the transfer of conditional use permit CU 1428 with 10 conditions. Brief history on the permit. On October 13th, 2014, the Planning Commission approved conditional use permit 1428 with nine conditions. Saw it next, October 26th, 2015, approved with the same nine conditions. And most recently, on October 8th, 2018, where it was approved with 10 conditions. Existing conditions are that it's in a zoning, zoned agriculture, general agriculture district. It sits on .53 acres. Lot contains a 25 by 29-foot single-family residence, a detached garage, and a 12 by 16-foot shed.
Good job.
As part of the analysis for conditional use permit 1428, this all started on March 6th, 2019, when Brady Grove submitted a vacation home rental application to transfer conditional use permit 1428 because of the purchase of the property. On March 15th, staff spoke with the property manager, and it was informed that the sales tax license was intact, and that there will be no change in the existing use as a conditional use permit, no additional bedrooms, anything like that. Staff performed a site visit on March 18th of this year. The Pennington County zoning ordinance, section 319, was revised on January 11th, 2017, and this is an important factor in moving forward with the review of this conditional use permit. In that section, it states, "The term transfer shall mean the grant or conveyance of an ownership interest in the vacation home rental property from an entity, trust, person, or combination thereof to another entity, trust, person, or combination thereof. The grant or conveyance of an ownership interest in the vacation home rental property from one spouse to his or her spouse, to his or respective spouse by lawful marriage shall not be considered a transfer." During the update of the conditional use permit, I'm sorry, during the update of the ordinance, the commissioners wanted to add some direction on transferring the property, because it was a contentious time for vacation home rentals, not necessarily this one, but, because this was in place long before that. So they spent, so the committee met for about 18 months, almost two years, to go over revising that ordinance. And with that, they came up with some criteria for the existing landowner prior to transfer and also for the new landowner after transfer. One of the requirements of the new, of the existing owner prior to transfer was to notify the planning department in writing of the transfer 20 days prior to the date of transfer. Again, this applicant, the applicant notified the planning department on March 6th, 2019. What staff was struggling with is that with that, they did not meet that 20-day criteria. So staff had several discussions, had met with the existing and future landowners, and also met with legal representation from the county. Staff found that the contract, that a contract for deed was executed on March 6th, 2019, and the prior owner failed to notify the planning department of the transfer per that section of the ordinance. Upon consulting the legal counsel, however, questions arose as to the enforceability of the notice requirement, the pre-notice requirement of 20 days. In addition, the vacation home rental was operated under conditional use permit issued prior to the amendment of 319 on January 11th, 2017, requiring also the one-acre requirement for the operation of the VHR in a general agriculture district. Therefore, the operation of the VHR on a half-acre is illegal non-conforming use. So we have those two issues there, illegal non-conforming under half-acre and the non-enforceability of the 20-day prior notice. In addition, staff has not received any complaints regarding the subject property or the conditional use permit, and therefore, staff would recommend approval of the transfer of conditional use permit 1428 with 10 conditions.
Any questions for staff? All right, any members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none.
Mr. Chair, I have one question.
Yes, go ahead.
Is it staying within the family?
Oh, I didn't ask if they were related.
Brady Grove's BLG Investments. We are not related. We just used to manage the property for the previous owners.
Okay.
Mr. Marsh.
I'm sorry, follow-up question to staff. So if it's less than one acre required for the VHR, and it's legal non-conforming, can it be sold without having to revert back to the requirements?
Be back to the requirements.
It's one acre, right?
No, this property is .53. The minimum requirement is the one acre.
Right.
And the use existed on the property prior to that ordinance change.
So if it didn't, if it wasn't there prior to the change, then it would have to meet the one-acre requirement.
Correct.
And because it was legal non-conforming prior, the recommendation is to move forward as is.
Well, yeah, it is actually a .53 legal non-conforming general agriculture lot, which actually requires 40 acres to be zoned.
That is your question, Rich?
Yes.
I see you're thinking some more on it, though. Mr. Ross, can I?
I was wondering, PJ, how critical that .53 is, because I've been asked by a couple of occasions, people that want, in that Black Forest Inn area, and they were less than the one acre, and we were pretty adamant that we had to stick to the one acre. But if this, I guess I understand that that was grandfathered in before these stipulations, though. I guess there's some leeway there, then.
I don't know about the leeway, because it sounds like the ones you're talking about might not have the use already established prior to the ordinance change. Some of the history on this is that originally vacation home rentals were excluded from suburban residential entirely. And so what the committee wanted to do, aside from come up with some transfer information, was also to try and have some more equality across all zoning districts. So in general agriculture, limited agriculture, low-density residential, and suburban residential, to allow suburban residential in, the minimum of a one-acre lot size is what was decided upon and ultimately approved by the commission, because by the state, one lot, one acre can allow for a single-family residence with its own well and its own septic, so it's its own enclosed system, where if somebody had a vacation home rental on less than an acre, they couldn't have all those three things together and might be pulling from somebody else's or a community location. So far, to best of my knowledge, everybody who's gone for a variance to the one acre has been denied by the Board of Adjustment. However, what people have been doing is consolidating lots together to meet that one-acre minimum requirement, and I believe all of the ones that have done that and then come back for a conditional use permit were ultimately approved.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
So no items from section 319, D, E, F, or G, or items from the conditional use permit prior are being requested to be changed or updated. This is strictly from one order to the next. Same requirements prior to the updated ordinance amendment are in place.
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Any other questions for staff? I see Michelle Hoffman's gonna give us some input.
Michelle Hoffman, State Attorney's Office. I thought perhaps I could clarify illegal non-conforming use for Commissioner Marsh. Essentially, at the time of the amendment in 2017, the operation of VHR on a half-acre was a legal use. It was in conformity with the existing ordinances. It only became a legal non-conforming use after the amendment requiring a one acre. And although we may by ordinance regulate the operation of what's now a legal non-conforming use, we cannot ban or bar that pre-existing use. It would be a taking of the property owner's rights.
So, well, I was gonna ask a question, if you don't mind. So, and this is just so I understand, I know most of the time we try to get rid of legal non-conformings whenever there's an update or something to the property. So I know you just explained it, so I kinda wanna wrap my head around that again. How come in this case we're not doing it? It's because it's already a situation prior to?
Well, the way you generally eliminate, you're correct, legal non-conforming uses are disfavored. The way they are eliminated is, for instance, non-use. Perhaps the new purchaser doesn't use this as a VHR. If I believe it's one year, both under statute and ordinance, non-use would result in the loss of that legal non-conforming status. Another way might be an expansion of that legal non-conforming use. You cannot expand or enlarge a legal non-conforming use. One of the issues that came up in looking at this application was the notice requirement. One might argue maybe that was the intent of that notice requirement, but some concerns have been raised by legal staff with regards to enforceability of that requirement, because it doesn't really serve any purpose. I think the idea was, the purpose was to make sure that the new owner came into compliance or was in compliance with existing conditions. Yet that is already met in another provision of the ordinance, which is much more defensible, and that is, you don't get to operate the VHR until you are in compliance, until you've met the licensing requirements and the notice requirements. So, and that's consistent with what zoning regulation, the purpose of zoning regulations. That's to regulate the land, and the conditional use runs with the land. It's inappropriate to condition a conditional use based upon the identity or the status of the permit.
Okay.
The intent of the notifications was put in place by the Board of Commissioners at that time to have them come in before then for approval, to be vetted, I guess, for lack of a better term.
But then we run into the problem where, due to no fault of the purchaser, the prior owner fails to provide notice, and it creates a very difficult position for everyone. So that's why we really started looking at the purpose as well. But given the fact it runs with the land and it's legal non-conforming, and I do not believe that we have a basis to deny the conditional use. Generally, conditional uses are revoked when someone fails to meet a condition of the permit.
Right.
Okay.
Staff is already looking at an update to the ordinance to clarify and to remove that previous notification requirement.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff?
PJ.
Yes, sir.
So the transfer of ownership, that's not an issue with this particular property?
No, I believe it's already transferred.
But there are mechanisms out there that would take that out of that legal non-conforming status. And if I understand that right, if they didn't use that, if they didn't do that, use that particular vacation rental for one year, it would lose that conditional use status?
That's correct.
Okay, and then if they enlarged the operation, that would also take it out of that?
Correct, they'd be increasing.
Okay, I just wanna know if there's mechanisms out there that would trigger taking it out of that conditional use status?
Yes, sir.
Any further questions for staff? All right, any members of the audience want to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none, current recommendation, the staff recommends approval of the transfer of conditional use permit CU 1428 with the following 10 conditions. Is there a motion?
I saw move.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That takes us to item number 15. Thank you.
Good morning. Cassie Bolstad, Assistant Planning Director. Item 15 is layout plot LPL 1905. This is a request to create lots one and two of Thorstensen Benson Ranch subdivision. The applicant is Julie Benson Wilber. The landowner is Jerome Benson. As this property exists today, it is zoned general agriculture district, currently consists of 79.37 acres. Access to this property is off of Nemo Road. There currently are no structures on this property, and the property actually contains three developmental lots, which have always been bought and sold as one land unit. So the creation of the two lots will also leave a remaining unplatted balance. What they are proposing to do is they are proposing to create lot one, which would be five acres, and lot two, which would be 41.74 acres. There is a remaining portion that will also remain unplatted at this time, a portion to the west of proposed lot, or, sorry, the east of proposed lot two. This request was routed through the interdepartmental review process. A couple of things that I did want to point out. The county highway department said that the existing field entrance approach on lot two has not been permitted. Approach permits will be required for both lots, and the register of deeds did state that the proposed subdivision name is acceptable. However, they did reference a change to the plat heading, which can be changed in the next stage of the plating process. Proposed lot one and the unplatted remaining balance will require a rezone or lot size variance as it is under the acreage requirement for a general agriculture district. However, beyond that, for the purposes of a layout plot, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request. So staff is recommending approval of layout plot LPL 1905 with eight conditions.
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
Why not plat the other portion to the east? Why leave a portion unplatted?
Sometimes people do it for the purposes of taxation. Sometimes, once you plat something and call it a subdivision, it puts you into a different tax bracket. Some people do it for the purposes of septic pumping and inspection. There's a couple of different reasons why people do it. I don't know particularly in this case why they're doing it.
Okay, no further questions.
Any further questions from any other members? Any members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none, current recommendation is recommend approval of layout plot PL 1905 with the following eight conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number 16.
Thank you. Good morning. Item 16 is a rezone request that you guys have seen in the past. So it is to rezone 19.419 acres from general agriculture district to highway service district. They previously requested to rezone this to general commercial district, and that was denied without prejudice by the Board of Commissioners. So the applicant did come back. So the applicant did come back again to request this to be rezoned to highway service district. They have also requested a plat of this property. If you could recall, that they would like to plat that front portion of the property along Highway 16 for the purposes of maintaining six billboards that are existing on that site. As it stands today, there are two access points on this property. There is one off of Highway 16 and one off of Pine Haven Drive. In conversation with the applicant, they are intending to utilize the access off of Highway 16, and Pine Haven Drive is an emergency access. I did get comments back from the D O T, and they are going to work with the applicant to address any issues depending upon what kind of use that is put on that property. There is highway service district all along Highway 16 in addition to in close proximity to this property. Also along Highway 16, there is suburban residential and low density residential districts that have bought highway service along this corridor. So for that purpose and that reason, staff is, staff does believe that it is in harmony with how it's being used, or how property is being used along Highway 16. So we are recommending approval of this rezone and comprehensive plan amendment.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Sandy.
At the original meeting, there were 15 to 20 residents of the surrounding area, and, and my question is, are, are they comfortable with this proposal? I don't know how many of you folks are here, but...
So it looks like they're gonna give some comment on it.
Yeah, okay.
I see the shaking heads.
Yeah, it, it was quite a controversy, quite controversial conversation, and I just wanted to have some assurance that the neighbors were comfortable with this recommendation.
I do believe there is some comments in your packet.
Yes.
From the, and then there's also, I have a presentation also from one of the...
Okay, thank you.
Property owners. I do know that there was quite a bit of discussion on this highway service district zoning during the Board of Commissioners meetings.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I met with a few of the landowners last Saturday, and they do have concerns, but if it remains low density residential, it's my understanding that they could probably plat that in the five or six lots, as long as they're three acres apiece.
With 19 acres, yes.
Right, so... Each one of those owners, if there are six lots, they would have to come in before they could get a building permit and address their water and septic. They'd have to show the county that they, that they can put a standard septic system in, or the, or some type of a system that would not create adverse conditions to the water quality.
They would have to meet our requirements, so 204 J, basically, they would have to do a profile hole and percolation test and to verify that whatever system that goes in would meet our criteria.
Yeah, so there's, there's some safety mechanisms, mechanisms in place for low density, and if, I think the question is now, if it goes to highway service, we just don't know what that use is, but no matter what that use is, they're gonna have, whoever would own that property would still have to follow the same procedures that they would have to follow if it was on low density residential. So, density would probably, the soil types and geology might dictate any density if it was to be rezoned commercial or main general service. So I just want the audience to know that there, just because there's a rezone, doesn't mean that whoever owns it will not have to follow strict requirements regarding septic systems and wells.
And if I can, Commissioner, I'll, I'll piggyback on that. Not every use in low density would even require a state, it's a state to get involved, but it, the, in, the likelihood of the state coming in to also inspect a septic system increases dramatically in commercial, general commercial or highway service zoning.
Right.
And also, I just wanted to point out, that's why I came up here originally, the applicant is not here today.
The applicant's not here today?
Correct.
Okay, is there anyone here representing the applicant by chance? Okay. Any further questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So my feeling on this is, we have this access permit. I don't feel like this can, maybe it won't be a suitable highway service district if there's not, and the ability to access it off of Highway 16. Because it appears the only other way to get on the property is through that residential road, yet we may have to wait another 30 days. Could staff, do you have any updates on how that permit, is it been, the access permit, has it been applied for, or how long we might have to wait to see what the result of that will be?
I am not aware that it's been applied for, but like I said, the applicant is not here, so that would probably be a better question for the applicant at this point.
I thought it already existed. The curb cut access off of Highway 16 on the, what, north end? I, I thought that already existed. Does it not?
Well, there was an access, because I remember, that was one of the things that was my concern, was the access there off of 16 and then following the road district access. And last time, I was told that that Highway 16 was only access to the, the signs, but...
To the billboards?
To the billboards. But as I understand, it actually, they're willing to give them full access to that piece of property through that access. Is that correct?
If you look at the comments on page six, they did say that they would require them to complete an access permit.
Correct.
And then they would respond to it within 30 days, so...
But it's possible still.
Correct. I mean, it would be between D O T and the applicant as far as meeting the criteria of their perm, access permit.
Do we know if they've applied for that permit?
I do not know.
We don't know.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
You know, my main issue with this is that when people bought their lots, built their home, they checked to see what neighboring, how the neighboring properties were zoned. Excuse me. And now that they've all built their homes, some of which are relatively expensive, were proposing to change the zoning that was in place when they first built. And that doesn't seem right to me.
Can I just point out, it's, it is being, the request is to have it changed, but the, the desired use can be utilized in what is currently zoned. Is that correct? Do I understand that correctly? What, what the property owners want to use it for is still off, is still allowed in the current zoning, right?
In general agriculture.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, never mind. I thought it was already L D R for some reason. I guess I missed that in there.
No, it's general agriculture currently.
Okay, they can't use, they can't use it, the use, it can't still be done in general ag then.
We haven't been given a clear direction of exactly what the future use is of the property. The reason for the rezone is because they had got a plat approved to plat that lot one and lot two in order to have those billboards on the front of the, along Highway 16. In order for that plat to be filed, they have to rezone it to a zoning district that allows those lot sizes. And currently, they wouldn't be, they'd be noncompliant because it's general agriculture and it's less than the 40 acres.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Sandy.
So Brittany, I just wanna make sure I understand correctly. If they, if the D O T does not approve the permit for the access off Highway 16, how does that, how's that gonna affect how this property ends up? Does that mean that the only access they'll get is through that residential neighborhood?
That would be the only other approach to that property. I don't know what the D O T will decide, if they will implement some sort of criteria or some sort of stipulations as far as that approach.
So for that reason, my comment is I'm not comfortable to recommend approval of this until we know the result of this access permit.
I was just in contact with the applicant. He had an emergency. He just left Keystone on his way here. The paneling commission does have the opportunity to table it till later in the meeting if you so choose, or you can continue it.
Any comments on that? Yes, Mr. Press Connect.
For clarity, there will be access off Highway 16. Mike Carlson with the South Dakota D O T did verify that. But we should wait for the applicant to be here in person, because he can tell you in more detail that information. But before I would buy into this, I'd have, I had to have that comfort level knowing that there would be legal and physical access off Highway 16 servicing that 19 acres. And the only ingress and egress to Pine Haven Road would be for emergency situations, and Deb Hadcock and I agreed that that would be a, pretty much a lock gate. In the case of an emergency, there would be a way out.
Any further questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to table it if we would like to wait for the applicant to get here. We will still have some more questions.
Move to table item 16. To, after item 19?
Second.
We're tabling it for a half hour.
Well, we can move it. I guess you can move it. You don't even have to table it then, right?
I would table it.
And then reconsider.
I mean, if you're driving in from Keystone, it will be at least a half hour.
Right. And then bring it up after item number 19.
Okay.
Hopefully he's here.
All right. Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries. Item number 17.
Item 17, this is another layout plat request. This is L P L 1906. This is a request to reconfigure lot lines to create lot 10 R and lot 11 of Bromgrass subdivision. The applicant is Lauren Lippert. The landowner is Gordon and Connie Howey. As these properties exist today, lot 10 of Bromgrass subdivision is zone general agriculture district, currently 55.66 acres, and access is via a section line and two 40-foot wide access easements. And there is special flood hazard area on that property. It's currently vacant. And then the other poor property that they are looking at right now is the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter and the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter. Also, zone, general agriculture district, currently it's 80 acres, access is via a section line, and this lot is vacant as well. What they are proposing to do is they are proposing to create lot 10 R of Bromgrass subdivision, which would be 35.452 acres, does not meet the minimum lot size requirement for a general agriculture district, so it will need to be rezoned or have a lot size variance approved. And lot 11 of Bromgrass subdivision would be 60 acres and would meet the minimum requirement for a general agriculture district, so that property would not have to be rezoned at this time. Both properties would take access via that southern section line. This request was routed through the interdepartmental review process. A couple of items that I did wanna point out, the county highway department said future developments on either of these parcels will require the construction of an access road from Antelope Creek Road along the section line on the south and the 40-foot easement on the west in addition to approach permits. The Department of Equalization said that it looks good except for an issue with the ownership certificate. We need Antelope Creek Ranch LLC, Connie and Gordon Howey also need to be shown. If they've sold to Antelope Creek Ranch LLC, we need a signed copy of the deed. And then West River Electric did state that they would like to see 25-foot easements located on the lot lines. This area will more than likely be served with overhead construction that will require the use of a 25-foot easement when development occurs. All three of those things have been addressed as conditions of approval for this plat. So with this proposal, the size of existing lot 10 of Bromgrass subdivision will decrease from 55.66 acres to 35.542 acres to become proposed lot 10 R, as you see outlined in blue on the screen. And then proposed lot 11 will be created using the remaining balance of existing lot 10 and a portion of the unplatted parcel. The un, the remaining balance of that unplatted portion right now will still remain unplatted. There's a portion to the west of what you see outlined in red here, proposed lot 11, that will remain unplatted still. Staff has met with the applicant regarding the steps and permits required to construct the access road to the proposed lots within the section line right of way, and also naming of that access road, as was indicated by the county highway department. None of, or neither of those applications have come into our department yet, but we have met with him. So for the purposes of a layout plat, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, and staff is recommending approval of layout plat L P L 1906 with 12 conditions.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, any members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none, current recommendation is approval of lat, of layout plat L P, 1906 with the following 12 conditions. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. That takes us to item number 18.
Mr. Nash said he'd be about 30 minutes, just after 10 o'clock he texted.
Well, okay, we'll see where he's at.
Item 18 is rezone 1903 and comprehensive plan amendment 1903. I'm sorry, they're both 1903, I apologize. To rezone 40 acres from general agriculture district to limited agriculture district, and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from general agriculture district to limited agriculture district. The applicant is Dwayne Anderson. Who is in the audience today if you have any questions? And the subject property contains 40 acres. As you can see, it's in close proximity to this town of New Underwood, and is also in New Underwood's plating jurisdiction. The applicant has already been in discussion with New Underwood, and the city council has, is going to approve his subdivision of the plat through their process. One of the requirements of that is to come into compliance with the county because that 40 acres is being split into two, which would then make it a nonconforming, two nonconforming lots in Pennington County. So to come into conformance, the applicant has applied for this rezone and comprehensive plan amendment to go from general agriculture to limited agriculture. On that subject property right now, there is a single fam, there is a number of buildings, single-family residence built in 1917 per Department of Equalization records. There's a general purpose barn built in 1950, tool shed in 1930. There also appears to be a single-wide mobile home on the subject property that, from the aerials, appears to be, used mostly as storage. However, one of the comments that came back from the routing is from, is that if it is used as a residence, then all requirements of 204 J of the Pennington County zoning ordinance would have to be required. But we don't believe that it's being used as a residence at this, at this time. There also is another structure on the subject property that does not appear in the Department of Equalization records, and it appears to have been built prior to 1994, and that is on page three of five of your staff report, and staff has no issues with that structure. The surrounding zoning on the subject property is general agriculture, limited agriculture, low density residential, general commercial, highway service, also the city of New Underwood and Mead County, as shown on page four or five of the staff report. The future land use is, all of those uses minus, I forget which one. Highway service is not shown as a, as a future land use around this, this area. Also, for the comprehensive plan amendment, as stated before, the applicant is looking to change the comprehensive plan from general agriculture to limited agriculture. It was routed through the interdepartmental review, and the only item of note is the one that we discussed as far as that single-wide mobile home. The city of New Underwood has approved the subdivision of the subject property contingent on county's approval of a rezone or a lot size variance. Prior to approval of rezone 1903 and comprehensive plan amendment 1903, the applicant will have to address the, with county staff, the unpermitted structures, but at the time that we had written this, we pretty much have the answers that we need at this time. The applicant's request to rezone appears to be in harmony with the current and future land use zoning. Staff would recommend approval of rezone 1903 and comprehensive plan amendment 1903.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, any members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? I see none. Staff recommends approval, rezone 1903 and comprehensive plan 1903. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Takes us to item number 18, 19.
Item 19 is the creation of plan unit development 1901 to rezone 38.48 acres from general agriculture district to plan unit development to create an apprentice training facility for linemen of Brink Construction. The landowner and the applicant is Brink Construction Incorporated, B C I Properties LLC, and the agent is Zane Brink of Brink Construction, who is in the audience today if you have any questions. As stated before, the applicant is looking to turn this just under 40-acre property into a training facility, from my understanding, only for employees of their company. Again, it is legal nonconforming for lot size, it is zone general agriculture right now. Again, it is legal nonconforming for lot size, it is zone general agriculture right now, just under forty acres. And what we're looking to propose is that this plan unit development be an overlay. The planning commission and the board have done PUD overlays previously on people who have multi-use properties, who don't want to get a number of conditional use permits. And once the use on this, because the applicant is looking not only to do the apprentice training facility, but also to maintain the general agriculture, all the general agriculture zoning uses for grazing cattle and haying, I believe. Once the, once the training facility is no more and goes away, then it would revert back to the general agriculture zoning. Before you, on the screen is the, is the applicant's general plan of what the facility is going to look like. There will be additional parking areas put into place. The single-wide mobile home, which is on the property right now, will be taken down and removed, and then some apparatus for the training, training will go up. In general agriculture zoning districts, there are no height limits for structures. And in speaking with the applicant last week, he had informed me that the tallest apparatus, I don't know if that's the proper word for these, but would be sixty-five feet. The only, we have not received any complaints about this property. The only phone call that we got is from an adjoining neighbor who actually utilizes the applicant's approach on the south side of the property, and she just wanted to make sure that the rezon was not going to adjust the width of that approach in any way. And I told her the rezon doesn't affect that because she uses that for her trucks to turn around. And so I asked her if it'd be a good idea to contact Mr. Brink specifically and, and discuss that. In looking at a plan unit development, there are a number of criteria to meet. And also specifically before we go through that is also to understand what the applicant is looking to do. So the applicant, again, it's the apprentice training facility. The hours of operation will be seven AM to five PM Monday through Friday and weekends if needed. Maximum attendance would be sixteen apprentice linemen with two instructors, and there will be plenty of parking available. Existing structures, as stated, will be either torn down or reconfigured, and he is also looking to build a new conference center on the property to serve the needs that they require. There is the parking requirement for this type of use in commercial or, for commercial or trade schools, and it requires one parking per three students and two parking spaces for every three employees, so we're overestimating a total of eight, but the applicant is looking to put at least twenty on the spot, so he would meet that criteria. This was routed through the interdepartmental review. The county addressing coordinator just stated that staff will determine any addressing needs as we move forward because of the type of use on the property, or it's discussed with the local fire authority to see if they want each structure or each physical structure addressed, or if one address would be sufficient for the property. On-site wastewater specialists just wanted to address that there is a thousand gallon septic tank and seventy-five hundred square feet of drain field, which could accommodate the sixteen employees and the two instructors, but also would recommend talking with the Department of Environmental Natural Resources because of the commercial, commercial use on the property for the septic. The county environmental planner mentioned that any disturbance greater or equal to ten thousand square feet would require a construction permit. And as a first notice of pumping and observation of the current onsite wastewater treatment system was sent on March fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, and an operating permit must be issued prior to approval of any changes in designation of the subject property. And this is only the first, this isn't even the first reading of this reason, of this plan unit development. It still needs to go before the Board of Commissioners two other times, so the applicant has at least four more weeks to get the operating permit approved. Because of the height of the structures on the property, Rapid City Regional was routed on, on this, they had no concerns. Ellsworth Air Force Base had no objections, and nine-one-one call center said that they're fine, and the city of Box Elder also said that they had no objections. So with the PUD considerations, you have to consider per section two thirteen of the Pennington County zoning ordinance for PUDs, that the appropriate relationship, that there's appropriate relationship to the surrounding area. Most of the surrounding area is used for, I don't think I have one of the whole area, single-family residence or is vacant agriculture land. The closest single-family residence is to the east, and it's over a quarter mile away. The provisions of internal street systems are met, the applicant has submitted an appropriate internal street configuration. Mainly what we're looking for there is that if emergency vehicles go in, that they can turn around without having to, to back up a considerable distance blind. That there is functional open space on the property, there will be considerable open space on the property, as the applicant is looking to use it still as an agriculture property for, for his cattle and also for gra, grazing. In PUDs, also need to look at the provisions for pedestrian traffic, there does not appear that this provision would need to be met for this specific use. Building types on the property, the applicants can decide what type of buildings they want in plan unit developments. And again, they're looking to remove that single-wide mobile home and repurpose the existing buildings and build a conference center. We have not got a, or received an, like an elevation picture of what those buildings are going to look like, but we have the basically general layout here, but it doesn't appear to show the conference center at this time. So the plan, the plan department has, again, has received no complaints, just one question, making sure that the approach was not going to be affected by this rezon. The current and future plan zoning on the subject property for this training facility is only mentioned in our zoning ordinance under general commercial. It is not mentioned in any other zoning districts, but we have very few things mentioned in PUDs because they are allowed to be creative with this use. However, rezoning this to a general commercial property would be spot zoning, as the closest general commercial property is over six and a half miles away. So therefore, to accommodate the applicant's request, maintain the general agriculture uses on the property, and minimize the need for multiple conditional use permits and variances, staff worked with the applicant to create this PUD. And with that long story, staff recommends approval of plan unit development amendment nineteen oh one with seventeen conditions.
Any questions for staff?
PJ.
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming that facility won't emit any significant noise?
None that I consider, as far as I understand, there's not going to be any electricity going through there, but probably best for the applicant.
And then you said that conditional use permit would be utilized for as long as they need to use it for that purpose, and then it would revert back to general, general leg when they were done?
The plan unit development, yeah, be in.
Or PUD.
Correct, yeah, be an overlay.
Do you give any kind of a timeframe, just out of curiosity?
No, we have not gotten there.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further questions? Any members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? Sir, would you like to come let us know if there's going to be a lot of noise on there?
Morning, Zane Brink. Noise, that most of that is with when electricity is flowing in it. So these are all de-energized lines, they're strictly for the use of training on, so there will be no, there shouldn't, there will not be any noise level coming from those.
I was just curious.
Yep. Nope, understandable. You know, as far as the land there, it's, and that is my goal, that if this does not, you, you question a little bit timeframe, as long as I'm doing what I do, and I've been doing this all my life, so I, I'd say I've got another good ten, twenty years left in me, so, but. No, the property, BCI Properties, is presently owned by me and my wife, and with, with Brink there that, but once it, it, it's not going to take us long to construct it, and it won't, it'll take us even less to tear it out if that's what we need to do.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. Any other members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none, staff recommends approval of PUD nineteen oh one with the following seventeen conditions. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. I know we discussed bringing up item number sixteen after item number nineteen, however, it doesn't appear that the applicant has appeared, and I do believe there's a couple of individuals here also to speak in opposition, is that correct, as I look over the audience? I think it might be wise to take a quick recess. Does anybody have their vehicles in that two-hour parking spot or anything of that nature so it can be moved, since he's not here? Maybe we can do all that now instead of stopping at eleven o'clock if we get moving, just out of curiosity. If not, I'm willing to, let's go ahead and pick it back up, but I just wanted to see if anybody need to move a vehicle or a quick break. I know Ron is going to be leaving in about ten minutes, is that correct, Ron? Mr. Ross, connect. You're going to be leaving in about ten minutes?
Ten thirty.
Yep, so.
Are we going to take a break now, then?
That's what I was asking, if we wanted to take a break real quick and then come back and then roll through with this. If so, I'd entertain a motion for a recess, five-minute recess. Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Rich. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Recession will pick back up at ten twenty-five.
Thank you.
I know we're at, after ten twenty-five, and I don't know where Sandy is, but there are four of us here, we should go ahead and resume our meeting, so I'd entertain a motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We're back in session. Hey, Jim, can you put your mic down? I don't think I hear you on the mic when you, when you speak, sorry.
Okay.
All right. PJ, I know that we're waiting for him to get here. Brittany, you got something for us?
Sure, sure. There is a gentleman in the audience that does have a presentation on that rezon, so maybe this would be a time that we could.
Absolutely. Yep. I would entertain letting them bring that forward since we're waiting.
Let's go ahead.
Go ahead, sir, if you have a presentation. Come on forward.
Travis, the State's Attorney's Office just asked that you make a motion to take it off the table.
Thank you very much, Michelle. We need a motion to take item sixteen off the table.
I will make a motion to untable item sixteen and bring it forth.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, no.
I didn't hear.
Motion carries. Oh, we're doing the untabling of item sixteen, so we can rehear it or go through it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Come forward, sir. Yes, sir, it's sixteen.
My name is Lon Buener. I'm a property owner close to the subject property. To be honest, I actually had two presentations. One was with regard to traffic off of Highway sixteen. One of the commissioners, county commissioners suggested I review it with you, thought it was worthwhile for you to see it, but because of time, I'm not going to present that part of my presentation, I'm going to present a separate presentation. In the end, if you want to see the traffic presentation, I can try to shorten it down. I have very serious concerns about the traffic impact of access on Highway sixteen. I personally met with the state DOT, I'm glad that they have come back to planning and zoning and are trying to work through that issue. We still have issues with regard to the access point, I think, but I'm going to let one of the other people talk about that. So with that said, what I show here is the actual wording on your zoning ordinance on section two oh seven, low-density residential. And it says, under intent, to allow low-density residential areas by design or to establish low-density residential areas which may be, not be suited to higher-density development by reason of topography, geology, drainage, or similar problems. And the point that I want to discuss with you today ties back to geology, because I do believe that what's below the ground is a significant factor of what this should be zoned ultimately. And I think consistent with these words, geology needs to be considered. And there has been nothing that I've heard up till now through all the meetings, as well as the information and analysis that's been done that talks about what's going on below the ground. What I'm going to show you is a sign that is posted at this turnout just north of the subject property. I'm also going to show you this road cut and a road cut right here, just south of the subject property again. When you go into that turnaround, turnaround, you see this sign, and it describes the geology of the Black Hills. It's got a pointer here that says you are here, and I'm not going to read this sign, but let me explain what, what it says. What it says is that the heart of the Black Hills is over two billion years old. You had a basin that was being covered with silt, shale, carbonate, and it continued to be buried. As it was buried, the heat and the pressure caused that rock to be metamorphized, which means changed. So what you have is you have this metamorphic rock, which is what I'll call a schist, it's like a quartzite. That rock is hundreds of millions of years older than this right here. And what you see is the Pahasapa limestone actually outcrops very close to where we are. This is also known as the Madison Formation. The Madison is a prolific aquifer. All of these zones here, water can flow through those zones. That's how Rapid City gets water from the Madison Aquifer. You need good reservoir quality to produce from there. All of this is not reservoir-quality rock. You cannot flow water through that. I didn't tell you upfront, but let me give you a little history about myself. I graduated as a mining engineer from South Dakota School of Mines. To get a mining engineer degree, you have to take a lot of geology. I went to work in the oil and gas industry, and I worked in the oil and gas industry for more than two decades. I was on the production size, side involved with the drilling and completion of probably more than a thousand wells. Some of those wells were what we call open hole, fractured reservoirs. Some of those wells were more conventional wells like you would do in drilling with the Madison Formation. But what this says is you have a dramatic geology change from here to here, they call it the unconformity. And we are dealing with this right here on the subject property. Because this is a schist, our source of water is the cracks in the rock. The Madison Formation, their source of water, in reality, is, is the surface up here, that's what's called the recharge zone. If you have a septic system over here, you're sitting right on top of the same rock that you're trying to get some cracks to produce some water from. You have a septic system over here, you move a mile and a half east of where you are, you have to drill down a thousand feet to get a Madison well. So from a potential contamination standpoint, substantially different on the subject property versus less than a mile to the east. This is the outcrop just to the east as you come toward Rapid City. This is your Madison limestone. You have some beds that are dipping toward Rapid City, that's why as you get toward Rapid City, you have to drill deeper to get into Madison. This is a outcrop or a road cut right across from the subject property. This is that gray hard schist, non-reservoir quality rock. It's this that we produce our water from, it's this that our septic systems are sitting on top of. This is what they call the Rockerville quadrangle. It is a surface map made by the USGS of the geology. You can see where that cross-section comes from that they have on the road cut. This is a cross-section that goes right across here, and it actually cuts right across Rockerville. Rockerville is that area right in there. But what you see is you have this pre-Cambrian rock, non-reservoir rock, over to the west, and then you've got your Madison Formation over to the east. So again, what I'm going to focus on is what should the density be of development that's sitting on top of this type of pre-Cambrian rock versus what should the density of development be just a little bit to the east? And when I look at the maps that Planning and zoning puts together, and depending on what you're looking for, I can see why you might have some highway service right next to some residential when you're sitting in that kind of geology environment versus over Again, I will point out to you that this schist is thousands of feet thick. A comment was made by an Indian A comment was made by an individual that was speaking for the applicant to the, to the county commissioners and said, gee, you know, I, I've drilled some wells, they actually did their perk test. And he said, I didn't see any of the slate you're talking about, but I saw a lot of gravel. Well, one thing that you, you do see is you see some areas of a very thin gravel bed. They really don't, it doesn't really deal with anything. But the problem you have with the septic here is that also is going to be exposed to the exact same cracks that you're trying to get your water from. And again, our water comes from the rain. We don't have an outcrop that we can go ahead and get our water from. This is a blow-up of that quadrangle of Rockerville. The subject property is right here. You can see the exits and the ramp from, from Rockerville, and, and you can see this thin gravel bed. My home and most of the homes out there, you didn't have an issue getting a permit, an approved permit for septic. You drilled your perk, your hole, you took your perk, perk test, it was fine. The point I would make to Commissioner Ross Connect if he was here is whatever is done with that property, even if it was low-density res- residential, I agree, people will come in and they'll get an approved permit for septic. But what's right beneath that perk zone, you have got thousands of feet of fractured solid schist, the same stuff that we're producing our water out of. That's dramatically different than what you'd have if you moved that septic system less than a mile to the east. There's a lot of literature on septic systems. And, and my concern, having gone through a lot of these meetings, is I'm not sure we're all on the same page on what a septic, septic system is good at and what it really doesn't do well at. So I want to take just a couple minutes and refer to some articles. This happens to be one titled "Septic System Impact on Surface Waters," it was published by the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality. And this is the first paragraph that they have after their introduction. And it says, "In the soil, biological processes, filtration and absorption remove most pathogens and some nutrients. However, conventional systems are not adequate for removing nitrate and only partly remove phosphorus, certain pathogens, and certain other compounds, especially where soils or groundwater conditions are marginally suitable or where septic systems densities are high. Anything that is not removed by the soil underneath the drain field will end up in groundwater." And I will tell you that our soil conditions are probably worse than marginally suitable. And septic densities tie back to the very heart of what I think I'm here to talk about, and that is what is the appropriate density for this area, given the geology that we have? When you look at our area, and again, I've, I've stated this before, we're pretty much, we have pretty much surrounded this property with residential areas, or with residential lots. They've almost all been developed, everybody has a septic system on their three acres, roughly. The exception is the motel. And let me just comment briefly about the motel, so I don't forget. I stopped in and talked to the manager of that motel yesterday. I knew from that, from my, my daughter staying there last year, that the rooms that they had in that motel, at that point in time, had one bed in.
Uh, what?
One, had one bed per room. There currently are twenty-nine rooms in that motel. They have taken and remodeled the interior and gotten rid of the one bed and put two bed, two beds. So what you have in that motel is twenty-eight rooms with a lot of them having two beds and a kitchen. Because of the magnitude and the use of that septic, you are putting more waste in the septic on that one three-and-a-half acre lot than you are the rest of our entire subdivision. That's if they go ahead and rent out twenty-eight rooms. Most of our houses are occupied by two people. And I'm going to show you shortly that the septic impact of a house with two people or four people or six people are dramatically less than what you've got with that motel. So when we talk about what should the zoning be and what ultimately is going to be in place in the subject property, again, the geology, the number of septic systems, and the wastewater come into play. This is a table that's in that same publication. The, the source of this is the EPA. And it says wastewater effluent constituents and treatment efficiency in soil. And what they're showing is how efficient is septic after a three-to-five-foot vertical infiltration zone? The good news is you're recovering almost all, or essentially all of your solvents and pesticides, your fecal coliform bacteria, your phosphorus. But from a nitrogen standpoint, you're only recovering ten to twenty percent. And what they're saying is that the effluent content of nitrogen is forty to a hundred milligrams per liter. The EPA limit of nitrate in our water is ten. You have effluent coming out of your properly-installed, properly-maintained septic of forty to a hundred. And this is the statement that they make with regard to the table. "As the table makes clear, a major weakness of conventional septic systems is the inability to effectively treat nitrogen. Once septic effluent enters the soil profile below the drain field, almost all the nitrogen is converted by nitrification to nitrite, nitrate. Nitrate is a very soluble chemical which is transported readily in dissolved form into and through the groundwater and ultimately to surface water. Thus, it should come as no surprise that one of the biggest concerns in areas with low na- with large numbers of septic systems is high nitrogen levels in surface and groundwater." I'll refer to another article that was written by the USGS and the Nevada Department of Water Resources. What they did is they went into four septic systems and they actually took samples to say, what is the effluent coming out of these properly-installed septic systems? And it says, "Analysis of total dissolved nitrogen concentrations from water soil samples collected within the soil zone under septic tank leach fields in Spanish Springs Valley, Nevada, shows a median concentration of approximately four hundred milligrams per liter, I mean, excuse me, forty-four milligrams per liter from more than three hundred measurements taken from four septic tank systems." So they said that they measured forty-four, and again, the EPA is saying it should be in the range of forty to a hundred, which again is consistent. The third article, "Nitrate's Groundwater and Onside Sewage Systems in Indiana," written by the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. "Because of, because a septic tank is typically anaerobic, meaning there's a lack of oxygen, organic nitrogen is converted to ammonium nitrate, nitrogen and remains predominantly as ammonium nitrogen in septic tank effluent. Estimates are that about ten to seventeen percent of the nitrogen is removed in the septic tank. Concentrations of total nitrogen in septic tank effluent range from forty to eighty milligrams per liter." Again, consistent with what the EPA table is showing. The last article is Pennsylvania, "Evaluating Groundwater Nitrate from On-Lite Septic Systems: A Guidance Model for Land Planning in Pennsylvania." And this says, "Conventional septic systems are a cost-effective means of treating the solids, organic pollutants, and microorganisms in wastewater. However, they are not specifically designed to remove nitrogen and tends to pass directly into the disposal field with the liquid effluent. In the disposal field, the ammonium nitrogen, nitrogen in the wastewater is quickly converted sequentially to nitrite and then nitrate through biological aer- aerobic nitrification processes. Nitrate is highly soluble and is negatively charged ions since soil particles are negatively charged. There is very little absorption and nitrate is easily transported through the soil horizon by the infiltrating wastewater and rainwater." They say that dilution from infiltrating grade, uh, groundwater recharge is the primary attenuation or reducer in the process for nitrates. So that providing sufficient lot or open space acreages to allow offsetting groundwater recharge for each septic system is essential to maintain water quality." So what that, what that says is you could put in an approved septic system, but every single septic system, because of the lack of efficiency of pulling out nitrogen, is going to put nitrates into the ground. I'd like to talk briefly specifically about where and how we get our water. This is the actual schematic diagram of the shared well that is a stone's throw away from the subject property. There are five wells that share this well. We have low-rate water wells coming out of this schist, fractured schist in our subdivision. We have, I know of at least twelve wells that are required to provide the need for our community. Every one of those has a shallow casing depth and open hole beneath it. This is a standard practice. There's pros and cons with this. The reason it's standard practice is because you don't know when you're gonna hit a fracture, and you don't know if that fracture's gonna produce water for you or not. And even if that fracture does not produce water for you today, if it rains today, that fracture might produce water for you tomorrow. So what you do is you try to maintain as much open hole as you can, because that's where your water source is from. The top eight foot, you know, that's kinda like your perk zone, they called it, I called it topsoil. Recent drillers call it drift, which is a, a better word because it's actually broken rock. I will share with you what our nitrate level is in that well. When that well was drilled over twenty years ago, our nitrate level was less than three. I won't get into detail, but that's actually a fairly high level for a base nitrate level. Since then, and we have continued to develop our area, it's fluctuated, but it's gone up slightly to where last year we were approaching eight. Again, our EPA limit is ten. There is some concern in our community, because the highest nitrate level we have encountered was last summer when the motel was put back in operation. We have recently taken another test and it's come back, but the motel has been closed. I'm not here to tell you today the motel is the problem, but I am going to tell you that we don't rule out that as a possibility, because when you consider the amount of nitrate that is entering the ground from a twenty-eight unit motel compared to one house, it's dramatic. Now, keep in mind, when they talk about the fact that you need to have great distance, and that's why I'm glad to see in your zoning ordinance that you say, hey, we're gonna focus in on geology, and for low-density residential, you need a three-acre lot to put one house on, because quite frankly, you need a hundred and, to a hundred and fifty feet distance from your septic to your well to try to make sure that you don't contaminate your well. You also keep that distance because it's leaching through that septic bed that also continues to add nitrates to the ground. Can you show me that other slide here, quick? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm new to this, so.
No, you're good.
Quick, show that one slide and then go back to this. This is a, a map from a study funded by the Western Dakota Water District. It was prepared by the School of Mines. It was published in two thousand and fifteen, so it's a little out of date, and what they did is they did a study of water quality in the pre-Cambrian rock area of the Black Hills. And they put together this map that said, areas of concern for nitrate. And I'll just read one sentence, it says, "Orange areas have been sampled and show where problems are likely to occur." And one of the orange areas with a bullseye is Rockerville, right this, where we're at with the subject property. Now, to me, that's not too surprising, because we have a lot of residential development in the area. You also see areas around Keystone, Hill City, you've got a lot of this green area where it's been, they've had samples, but they're saying, hey, this really isn't an area of concern. If you buy into the fact that septic systems result in nitrate entering the ground, then you can understand why this map looks like it does. But if you buy into that fact, then you have to also understand that the number of septic systems that you put in and the density of your development is gonna impact the potential problems or not have problems with regard to the quality of your water. Keep in mind, our casing depth is twenty-five feet, and all I have to do is get septic effluent twenty-five feet and over to that well, and I've contaminated that well. Back to the other one. And I don't know what's gonna happen to the subject property, but I've lived in this area for fifteen years, and there, what little development that there has been outside of the residential area have been in three things, and I'm talking about the area where the geology dramatically changed. One of them is hillside cabins just up the road. And you can see that what you have is you have a lot of cabins in a small area. It's a treat area, you've got topography problems. But there's no residential area around here. There may be one residence that, that lives here to manage that property. Right across the street, you got a brand-new one, Big Cabin Mountains, you can see them building on the hill, you've really got a topography issue here. Same thing, no residential area around those cabins. You go just past the Keystone Y, this is a new area, Rustic Ridge, again, you can see the cabins, got one on the hill, I do believe there is a residence there. Topography issues, no residence that's been developed around that area. Hillside cabins and big mountain cabins are zoned highway service. If this would be zoned highway service, I don't know what's gonna go in there, but if I take the density of the cabins that are on hillside, a three-point-four-eight acre, uh, cabins per acre, this subject property, which you don't have nearly the topography problems, would have at least sixty-six cabins on it. If you take the big mountain cabins, which has four cabins on nine-point-six acres, and expand that to the amount of acreage that you have, again, you're dealing with much more than six residences that you're going to have with low-density residential. Low-density residential will require three acres for one resident. Rustic Ridge cabins, if you gross that up, would be forty-eight cabins. I don't know what's gonna go in there, but I'm willing to wager money it's gonna be cabins. If you take a look at that existing motel, you have twenty-eight rooms. That's equivalent to me to twenty-eight homes worth of effluent from the septic system on three-point-four acres. If you gross that up to nineteen acres, you can get a hundred and fifty. If you take the cabins and motel that's in the heart of Rockerville, that's sitting, I think, on two-point-four acres. You gross that up to this nineteen acres that's fairly flat, and you can get a hundred and thirty. So when I take a look at where our nitrates are and how we're producing water, recognizing we're producing water from this fractured schist that we're also putting nitrates in, I am not the least bit interested in any zoning that does more potential harm for our water than what our houses do, and that is, one house, we average two-point-six people per house per three acres. Because if you do allow them to go ahead with highway service or commercial or anything else, just like that motel that's there, then I think it's a disservice to us, and we literally are at risk of losing our water quality. And I will not get into the detail, but I will tell you, if we lose our water quality because of nitrates, we are in serious, serious problems, because there is no easy way to get out of nitrates problems. You can put in a reverse osmosis system and have one faucet that would allow you to be within an EPA, PA limit, but depending on the model of that system... But depending on the model of that system, that's a semi-permeable membrane and the backwash of that system, for every gallon of clean water you get out of that, you backwash four to 20 gallons and you stick it back in your septic. And you're sticking the nitrates back in the septic and you're adding more liquid to the septic, which is exactly not what you want to do. So again, I tell you that we're doing what we can to try to minimize any water quality issues. We all pay, pay a flat fee for maintenance for our water wells, but I've got the most efficient washer that I can get because I'm trying to minimize the amount that I send to my septic. I even went so far as to, quite frankly, try to reduce the number of times I flush my toilet. It cost me 200 bucks because I ended up with more paper than I could get pushed through there. I ended up plugging up my line to my septic. But those are the things that I do to try to protect our, our quality of water. I and my neighbors do not fertilize because fertilizer is one of the two things that are reported on the state forms if you're, if you're out of compliance. They say reasons for a nitrate problem. One, runoff from nitrogen and two, leaching from septic beds. That's their two main reasons. We can't control the amount of rain that's going to do it, but we can kind of control the waste that goes there and you can control the number of septic systems that we have. So quite frankly, I urge you to deny the request because the geology and how we get our water puts our drinking water, the drinking water of this whole area potentially at risk. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Lawn?
Uh, I have a question.
Go ahead, Jim.
So it's reverse osmosis and you say you can get one faucet. Is the concern about nitrates limited to drinking water?
The, the primary concern on nitrates is, is related to drinking water. It was established in about the mid 1940s that in particular babies, there's a, what they call blue baby syndrome, that it, high nitrates above a level of 10 can be fatal to babies. There are others, health issues that can get into the elderly, but primarily the nitrate issue ties back to the drinking water.
Okay, but, but the concern here is that uses for laundry, showering, so forth, that doesn't apply?
Yes, it does because all of that goes into your septic tank and comes out as a 40 to 100 part per million nitrate.
Right, but it's not, it's not a potential hazard to the, the...
It's not a hazard, it's just the fact that that effluent then still enters the ground, so it's, so, so that's where you have the problem. But from, from the, from the interior of the house, the issue is not doing laundry, doing dishes, the issue is drinking water. Yes.
So would your recommendation be that there be virtually no development in this area? Because the, the way you've described it, which I, I don't follow, I, I have no reason to believe it's not accurate, uh, would suggest that even the rather sparse development that you've experienced where you live, which I assume is not high density, it's LDR at least, um, that any kind of development would be significantly hazardous? I mean, whether it be residential or commercial or...
What, what I would, what I would say, how I would answer that is this development that I live in has been developed over a little more than a 20-year period. And our nitrate levels have clearly elevated. Now, the issue is what's the right density to where you still can have development, but not exceed the water quality thresholds? Because we're at a six, seven, maybe touching eight, I'm not saying there should be no development. I'm saying that additional development, recognizing we have about 24 homes in that area, I'm supportive of, I don't like the word rolling the dice, I, I, I'm willing to allow six additional homes, a maximum of six additional homes to be developed on that subject property under low density residential. Where I have problem is if you go beyond that because if you allow low density residential of one home per three acres, I, I know, okay, this may go up a little bit, but I'm still hopeful that we can stay within that limit. If you go and put a motel there or you go and put a lot of cabins there, you go, I mean, I, I am concerned about the motel just from the standpoint that I can understand why the more people they get there, the more money they get. But now that I know that that same septic system is going to have to handle twice the load that it did last year, I don't know what the impact's going to be. If we start to bump the 10, we'll have to try to figure out what options do we have? Our options are not great. The other reason I will tell you is, is I strongly would prefer low density residential is because when you're trying to keep, when you, when you're required to keep a distance from your well to your septic, if you don't have low density residential with three acres, even with three acres, that's, that's a challenge because I have to look where my offsetting neighbors have their septic. I have to look where I have my septic. I have to look where I have my house and I have to try to find where can I potentially drill a well if I have to drill a well? The other thing, you know, that we wrestle with is during dry times, to be honest, this well has, has gone dry. So we've had five homes that run out of water. The good news is it rains and we can get it back. It's, it's very unusual for us to have to all water, but we've had to do it. But we don't have very many options because there aren't very many other wells or areas that we can drill wells, even with the three acres per resident. So I'm not opposed to any development and I'm not saying that because of this, we can't have any development. That wouldn't be fair to the, to the property owner there. But I, but again, I don't think you're fair to us to risk our water for a higher density than one residence per three acres. That's what, that's what we have been working with and it, and it's, it's, it's been acceptable for 20 years. I'm hoping that it will continue to be acceptable. Now, to me, if you, if you increase the density with cabins, put another motel there, you know, when I go through the list of highway service, corner operated law, uh, laundry, restaurants, I mean, there are things that can be there that can potentially create a problem for us. The topography doesn't help because it's been stated to you earlier, this slopes right down into Merv's Lot, our shared well and everything else.
I, I assume that when you talk about cabins and hotels and so forth, you, you realize that these are terribly seasonal operations. I mean, like the ones you showed, I don't know how long they operate, maybe four months, maybe five, but with, uh, so, so, you know, I understand, uh, in normal circumstances, I'd say, yeah, a hotel would have a huge impact, but those are, probably have rather minimal impacts compared to what we would expect, for example, from operations in, uh, like even commercial hotels in Rapid City that would operate pretty much year round.
I, I agree that a seasonal would put less nitrates in the ground ultimately than the others, but, but the point I would make to you is if you look at the, at this table, our two highest nitrates were August of 14 and August of 18. Now, is that due to weather? Because we're not getting as much rain? Is that due to usage of, of the motels? I will tell you this, that that motel and, and commercial properties or businesses where the public uses the water, they have to test the water monthly. I would also tell you, based on what I have seen from our wells, if it rains today, I can't tell you for certain how long does it take to impact our well, but it is a short time because you're going, you're not flowing through miles of Madison Formation. You're not flowing through thousands of feet of Madison Formation. You're flowing through 30 feet or more of rock. And I don't know where that water comes from. I don't know where the septic goes. That's part of my concern also. If you have a septic, I know that there's nitrates going to enter, but where are they going to enter and how are they going to get there? They could easily flow off the subject property into someone else's property, someone else's property, you're not going to know. And I don't know exactly what rainwater gets to our well, but it gets there and gets there in fairly quick order because again, you're flowing through cracks versus the rock itself.
Any more? Any other questions for Mr. Lawn? So what kind of septics are up in that area? Are they standard septics in the area up there?
Yes.
Okay, so...
There's, there's, there's maybe one or two mounds, but they're standard, other than that, they're standard septics, standard septics.
With your concern about all this, for future septics, even in the developing area or even later on, if they ever need to be replaced, would you make a recommendation of the type of septic to put in that would be beneficial to the local area?
I'm not a septic expert. I will tell you this, that being president of our homeowners association for quite a few years, I've done a lot of research on septic. There are some new techniques, but they're, they'd be very unchallenging, very challenging for us as an older community to get into. What they have is they have regenerating gravel beds. And what you do is you try to get the effluent to recycle back through a carbon type bed like sawdust or wood chips. And you try to recycle that before it goes into the ground because that gives the nitrogen in the effluent, the opportunity to denitrify and get back to the air. It's the same kind of concept that you have with your wastewater treatment facilities where you see them, you know, spraying water. They're denitrifying and getting the nitrogen out. So there may be some options with newer technology that might be available if, if you're looking at new development. Potentially there's something that could be done with, you know, other areas. The solution is to try to avoid the problem in the first place. And to the extent that you can do that through maintaining a significant distance between your septic and minimizing, minimizing the amount of, of liquid that you have going in there, that's what, I mean, that's really what we need to be focusing on. So, so there may be some technology that, that can be out there with time. I haven't found it yet and applying it over a large scale, it's, it's, it's just not very feasible for anybody to determine in the literature.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Hi, just an update on the applicant. The issue that was making him late is going to keep him from attending the meeting today.
Okay. So in the interest of that, knowing that the applicant's not going to be here, typically we at least give the applicant an opportunity to discuss. I know there's individuals that probably still want to give a presentation so that we have the information and we've done that before. It's up to you. Uh, we're willing to at least hear what you have just in case you don't make it to the next, next meeting, um, but we're probably not going to take any specific action on this today. I, I'm just making a statement. I'm not saying that we will or will not, uh, but we're willing to hear, uh, what you have to say if you can't come back to the next meeting that we might, uh, move this to, assuming that's what the body wants to do. So if there's anybody else in the, uh, audience that'd like to speak on behalf of this item? Now, I'm going to ask, is your presentation as long as Mr. Lawn's was? Okay.
Uh, my name is Brian Johnson. I live on Pine Haven Drive also. I was hoping I could go first so, uh, Lawn could kind of back clean up for me, but, uh, and it won't be as thorough either, so you don't have to worry about that. I'm gonna, there, there was a letter sent out by, uh, Rob Popple. I don't know, it was in your kit or whatever you get there and, uh, I want to respond to a few of the things in that letter. I think he's painted our neighborhood a little bit, uh, in the wrong, uh, fashion, if you might say. Uh, but first I want to thank Commissioner, uh, Runde here for kind of making some good comments and, uh, about property rights and who's been there first and, uh, now they want to change the rules on us and I value that. Thank you. And also for Sonny Rivers, uh, making them comments on Highway 16 and he's concerned about the access point. That's one of my concerns also and I'll get into that here in a little bit. Initially, when we, uh, were in front of you, uh, at the last planning commission meeting, Ken Nash, the seller's agent, uh, had proposed using Pine Haven Drive as a primary entrance to the, uh, subject property. Using a road district road where the homeowners are solely responsible for the, uh, costs of maintaining that road, for commercial purposes, it was recognized as being unfair. And that was probably one of the reasons you all voted for, uh, to reject that rezone and we thank you for that. At the following Board of Commissioners meeting, Ken Nash said they were going to use a service entrance along Highway 16 as the primary entrance to the subject property. And the Pine Haven access would be gated and locked and only used as an emergency exit. And I think there was a little discussion on that when Commissioner Roskinick was here. Uh, Lon Buhner, who made this, uh, previous presentation, also made a very thorough presentation on the, uh, traffic concerns in our area. And I'm sure if you have more time, he'd love to come up and, uh, go into that with you. But now Mr. Popple submits an easement allowing access to the Rockerville Lodge. It's in the letter there, he says, and then the easement is in there. But what he doesn't mention in the letter is that the turnoff for this, uh, access is Pine Haven Drive. And, uh, he also states in the letter, he has multiple options for accessing the property. Well, I'd just like some clarification here of what their intentions are and maybe we can get that at the next meeting and ask Mr. Nash what their intentions are here. What are they going to use? Are they using Highway 16? Are they going to use Pine Haven Drive and go through the Rockerville Lodge? Or are they still trying to go back through Pine Haven Drive and using that alternate exit that was supposed to be gated and emergency exit only? So I'd like some clarification on that. And I don't see anywhere in writing where it says that this, uh, emergency exit, so to speak, on Pine Haven Drive is going to be gated and locked. And I'd like to see that in writing personally, so that's my concern on the, uh, access. Mr. Popple refers to our concerns as stall tactics. We're sorry this process isn't, uh, moving as fast as he would like, but I don't think neighborhood concerns such as water quality, property values and quality of life should be taken lightly. The negative impact of this rezone decision could be permanent. Mr. Popple says, also says in his letter, he has no issues with the septic system and well at his Rockerville Lodge. Well, as Lawn has indicated, that property sits on a hill and we all know where things go downhill to, to try to be nice. The community dwell, as Lawn has said, is, is near the bottom of that hill and he has gone into the septic thing quite thoroughly, so I'll not go any, any further into that. He also makes comments regarding our neighbor, Bill Hearn. Bill was not able to attend today, but I'm sure he will be addressing the comments made toward him at the next commissioner meeting. I will say that, that I and several neighbors met at Bill's home to determine the financial commitment of putting together a backup offer if the rezone was not approved. At the last commissioner meeting, one of the commissioners accused Bill Hearn of being disingenuous in his presentation of putting together a backup offer. She later retracted that comment. Mr. Popple states in the first part of his letter that he was the only person under contract to buy the subject property. We don't dispute that. However, at, at the, one of the commissioner meetings, a person named Ray French stood right up here and said he, uh, didn't think our water and septic concerns were... and said he didn't think our water and septic concerns were valid, and that he was interested in buying the property. He was interested in buying the property. And he was sitting next to Ken Nash and chatting during the meeting, so all soon he was put in that, in front of everyone to say that by either Rob Popple or Duane Pancratz. Now, that to me, I don't know, is that disingenuous? I think so. That's all I have for you today. Is there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much. Any other members?
Okay, I'm Merv, Gus Miller, and my lot is on the north. It's a long, narrow one, right adjacent to the property we're talking about. It adjoins Pine Haven Drive on one end. See where it is? The assessed value of my property is over a million, between a million and a million one. And then my house is, I can't see it on there, but it's only thirty-eight feet from the property that we're talking about. I know Roskinick has been there right from my house. It drops down into... Yeah, the house is right there. And when, you can see a little bit of it there. Okay, and right there, it drops down into ravine, so I'm not concerned somebody's going to build something right, right there. But when you go just sixty feet toward Pine Haven Drive this way, it does level off to where something could be built sixty feet from my house. Those of you that live in acreages know what that would do to the value of your property and to the privacy. Our house has a port turn on the south side and one on the west side, and my wife and I sit out there quite often for obvious reasons. It's quiet. It's a peaceful neighborhood. We have coffee in the morning. I have a disabled daughter that, I saw her out there Saturday. She was drinking coffee, reading her Bible, which she does quite often, so she likes being outside and like it being quiet. So that, that would be a real concern for me is just, we're just so close to the property. And now hearing Lawn's story and his information that he gave us on septics and water, that scares the heck out of me. I don't know how you feel about it, but being that close to it. You probably are thinking, well, if you're that close and your property's worth a million, why the heck didn't you buy that at nineteen or twenty-one acres? I did attempt to buy it. I'm the one, if you see any information on Rob's letter about somebody that's all talk and no action, that's me. That's who he's criticizing. Well, what happened there was I agreed, I agreed on the price of the property per acre with Pancratz. And when it got to a point with like about several weeks after it was surveyed, I finally got a plot plan. And the plot plan was showing a sixty-six foot strip along the highway of which I was not able to purchase. And to me, that screws up the value of that whole property for what I was planning on using it for in the future. So that's when I backed out and didn't purchase it. So just so you know that what Rob's, but it's too bad. It's gotten to a point where we're kind of personally attacking each other like a bunch of kids instead of staying focused on, on this property issue, but that's what he's doing. So just wanted to, I wanted to clarify that. I want to let you know, we sure would appreciate keeping it low density residential, living that close to it. Okay, that's all I've got.
Any questions? Thank you. Any other members of the audience want to speak on behalf of this item? Any further questions for staff? Let's see, none. Is there a recommendation on this item, being aware that the applicant was unavailable for us to discuss some of the concerns today?
Will we continue this to the next regularly scheduled meeting?
Which is the twenty-second of April?
I don't know if we can set, I would, I don't know if you can amend the motion before it's been seconded. Can you do that, or do you wait?
Well, you can ask him before. Or a substitute motion.
All right, my substitute motion would be to deny any rezoning of this property.
Is there a second to the substitute motion of denying any rezoning of that property? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion fails due to no second.
Okay, thank you.
Back to the original motion, which to continue...
Still looking for a second.
And still looking for a second on that one.
I'll second that one. I think it's important. I do appreciate everyone coming today, and I'm sorry that action may not be heard on this, but to be fair to both sides to the issue, I think it's important that everyone have their ability to say and discuss in front of the board, so I will second that.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, no.
No.
We're going to do a roll call vote. I do believe it's just one no, but there's five of us here, so I just want to make sure we get the numbers. Jerry?
Rich?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Sandra?
No.
Sonny?
Aye.
Aye, four. Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. Item number twenty.
Hello PJ, County Director of Planning Department. Again, item twenty is the county board report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation from the March twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen Planning Commission meeting.
Any questions for PJ on those, on that item? All right, item twenty-one, items from the public.
My name is Joyce Shagru. I'm a representative of the public. I'm here because I've been involved with the vacation home rental ordinance development since the very beginning. Every phase of the first ordinance, the second small amendment, and the third phase with the ordinance that we have now. And I came today, I'm watching all of the time. PJ knows this. I watch the agendas for both this and the county commission. I read the packets, and if necessary, I watch the video. I think everything's been going smoothly, so I don't attend the meeting. I only appear here when I think I want to know who's in the room and see the discussion face to face. So today I'm here because I was interested in agenda item number fourteen and the transfer of property. That's the first time that I've seen a discussion on transfer of property. So I have the following thoughts. First of all, what do we do next since legal counsel has said that the requirement that the seller notify, planning and zoning, is not enforceable? I don't believe that we should have any type of law or ordinance, rule or regulation on the books that's not enforceable. To me, that would be like saying we're going to set the miles per hour in the interstate at eighty, but we're not going to do anything if you drive at one hundred. That's a useless, a useless ordinance or law. And we have one in state right now, which is we require birth certificates for all babies born here, but we have no enforcement, which means if you don't do it, there's no ramifications. So I don't think we should have something on the books that cannot be enforced. But we should have, either we need to relook at that, which would be one thing that I would recommend, but remember the intent of that part of the vacation home rental ordinance. And what had confronted us was that we had no knowledge when a property that was a VHR was sold and the conditional use permit went with the property. And we saw the sale of it as an opportunity to help the business owners and protect our guests that come to this area through the new ordinance. So that was, that was the intent of that, and that won't work now. So now, what we did this time was the buyer came forth to get the new conditional use permit. So that is the opportunity then to see if this is, if this is good or not. The other area was the acreage of one, under the new ordinance, is one acre, which makes all of those prior to that legal non-conforming. There were some, I think specifically of one county commissioner, who believed that we should apply the one acre as these transfers were made, but now it's apparent we cannot do that. So again, we need to think through that, and that's why I came today. But in watching what's going on and being involved, and I'm somewhat reticent to get involved again because it's been so contentious, so people do talk to me. I think what we're doing now with the current ordinance is going smoothly. It's working well with the one acre because density was our issue before. Most of the contention became before us because of the density issue when the VHR properties were on very small lots. So I think the one acre is working well. So we have, so I want to really, really voice my opinion on that. I think that is good, and I would not want to see you go back to small lots with vacation home rentals because I think that has smoothed out a lot of our problems which came from density. Out there, however, are some, the review process is working. We have some citizens who have problems with some of the VHRs. They no longer come before you because they feel they're never heard. And some of it may be, and this is what happens when you're on a board, not necessarily this one, but if you hear from the same person enough, you forget to listen. So they're no longer coming to you, but that's their problem, really not yours. But I wanted to tell you today that we do need to relook at it. We want to be careful because I think we've got currently a good ordinance and don't throw out those parts that are making it work well. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Thanks for coming. I don't see anybody else here for public comment, so items from the staff.
Okay, items from the staff, there's going to be three. I know there's only two on there, but it won't take that long.
It's a standard. We've noticed you keep adding one.
The first is the two thousand and nineteen March building permit report. As you can see, single-family residents are up thirty-three percent over this time last year, which is not much when you consider we've only taken in seven since January. Garages and carports are down over fifty-five, about fifty-five percent. Overall, we're down forty-six percent at the end of March, where we've taken in seventy-four over a hundred and thirty-six over last year. However, as of this morning, we were at a hundred and seventy-two, so just since April, we've taken in over a hundred. Well, just around a hundred. So it was all weather related as we were thinking. The next thing is, there was a question about, switch over here, the state's training that was coming up. Commissioner Rivers is signed up to attend the training next week. There may still be some space available for that erosion and sediment control, water management training. It's here up on the screen for you. If you are still interested or have changed your mind and now you have availability, let us know. We'll see if we can get you in. Normally, every year, they do have multiple opportunities in March and April. As you can see, they're kind of spread out around the state, and we usually go to the one that's the closest to us. Finally, there was also the two thousand and nineteen Western South Dakota Hydrology Conference being held this week in Pacific Center on Thursday. Information on that was sent out. I believe Commissioner Rivers is attending that one as well. If you are interested, we can send you additional information, and we should be able to get you in. I don't think space is as limited as that other training is. So other than that, that's all I got.
Any questions for PJ? All right, items for the membership. I won't be here next meeting. I will be out of town at a conference in Dallas, so Rich, you'll be here?
Mm-hmm. As far as I know.
As far as you know, at least currently planning. All right, anyone else have anything for the membership?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is it, PJ, help me out. Is it okay if I, can I ask staff to research the well reports for the lodge that's associated with the Pine Haven item?
If the, make...
What are my, where are my bounds there?
I would say probably the same with the board. Not one, there's no one board member that can direct staff to do that. So what they've done in the past is take it in front of the board, and the board made a motion. Well, the, the board member would make a motion, and there'd be a decision by the board to direct staff to do that. So I don't see why that would be out of bounds here if you'd like to do that.
How about, could, could someone just point me towards the website that has the well, the water reports on it? I believe it's on the D E N R website.
It is. That we can...
Just send me, just send me a link, say, hey, here it is, and I'll go from there.
Can you shoot that to me and if anybody else wants it? Probably be good to send it to all of us. I want some more information on that.
That'll probably come from Brittany because she, I think she has that and saved as a link, so.
Is there a way to find out, is there a way to find out how many septics are in that area too, just in general?
We'd have to go through, well, we assume probably every residence would have one, but just because there isn't a residence there doesn't mean there isn't an active septic there. But that could be looked at as well, if you're interested.
Okay.
I have something I would like to say.
Okay, Sandy.
Okay, you know, for forty years, I've been in the real estate business. Also, for over twenty-five years, I've held the highest license of appraisers issued in this state. And over forty years' time, I have listened to people complain about development on neighboring property, to which I say, when you built your house, you had an obligation to look at the neighboring property to see how it is zoned, and you shouldn't be complaining if somebody wants to do something on property that was zoned in the fashion that it was when you built your home. And these people have said that they verified the neighboring land, and now to change it, to me, it is really a total disservice to them to do that because they verified when they built their homes, well, some of them did, that there would not be any type of construction or development such as has been suggested.
The problem is then, there would be no development around here. We'd have huge areas that would have to, would be obligated endlessly to a single sort of zoning, you know, classification, which if we were to endorse that, and that isn't, oh, oh, I'm sorry, but it, to me, it potentially restricts the development of the area economically. And I agree with what you're saying, and I sympathize with people who are in those circumstances. But I think you have to be pretty naive to buy property that's five miles out of town and expect to live in pristine silence indefinitely. This is an area that's growing, and most areas are. And, you know, sadly, not that I'm inclined to endorse this application, but I, I, I think there's two sides to that argument of what, you know, what to do about the zoning and whether people should, whether we should prevent changes in zoning. And so, you know, that's, but I'm, and I sympathize with your feelings, you know, because, I mean, I've owned property in the county where I thought, oh, Christ, if somebody does such and such or so and so next door, you know, we're in trouble, you know.
I hear what you're saying. I'm just, my point is just that these neighbors are vehemently opposed to it, whereas other development, yes, I understand. You know, property gets annexed into the city, development grows, you buy a piece of land in the middle of Timbuktu in the hopes that someday it will become, you know, more valuable at a future use. Just saying that given the circumstance, this particular circumstance with these folks, you know, and his million dollar home will in fact be devalued and...
I, I, I don't think we can prevent that from happening if it does.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think we're obligated to, and I don't think it's fair to people who, you know, and I'm the last person who would endorse the goals of most real estate developers, quite frankly. But, but I do understand that they also have a legitimate claim on.
Sure.
You know, the wealth of land, you know, but it's going to make an interesting discussion.
Yeah, I hear you.
And I'm of the mindset also, I mean, don't get me wrong, we have to consider how it's going to impact them, whatever ends up being rezoned there. But I'm of the mindset too, if you buy a property near something that's already zoned, in this particular case, general agricultural, well, they had to rezone all of their property in the area. So to think that somebody who owns property wouldn't have considered, maybe if they have plans changed, or if they sell it, somebody else owns it, to consider that individual might would rezone it, that's kind of far-fetched, because if I own a piece of property and I have a plan and I can afford it and I buy it and you didn't, shouldn't I be able to develop within the rules and the boundaries of the ordinances? If I can get it approved, as long as I'm following all those rules and regulations, then I should be able to do with my property as the law deems fit. If not, then you're restricting my rights to either have a business, a home, or whatever it is that I want to put there. So, rights go both ways. I do understand their concern about property value. I've seen, you know, I've seen a lot of different things with property value. I think that's pretty subjective. I mean, yes, there's objective things that.
Sure.
That come into play, but you know, sometimes property values that are expected to be lower sell for higher, and some that are supposed to be higher sell for lower. It just depends on what an individual's willing to pay, and either the loss or the profit the property owner's willing to take.
I understand.
So, I, I do, I think we're all thinking of all those things. I don't think we're just saying, ah, the staff is telling us, we agree, so let's just agree with, I think we're, we're all thinking about it, and we're, you know, I look at both sides, and I, I try to put myself in the same situation. If I was there, what would I think? Well, yeah, I bought it for it to be quiet. I mean, there's a reason why I live out in New Underwoods.
Sure.
Or east of New Underwood.
Sure.
But I do realize that my neighbor right next to me could sell it off, develop it, and then there you are, so.
Well, I just wanted to make those comments.
I, I will say though, I am concerned with the water and the septic, you know. That's why I asked about their septic. Well, if you think your septic's are contaminating it though, my, my thought process in general is, well, then what are y'all doing to mitigate that from even up in your, your community? That's kind of where my thought process was going on that, but I didn't really think all that through as I was asking the questions. I was just asking a few things to get some data points for my thoughts, so. All right, anything else? Anything else on that item? That's items for membership. If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.